It's not. Nowhere for you to go. Nowhere to go. No, you're not. There you go. Probably hard to wire. I'm really looking forward to seeing how that holds. You get one unit there. Victory. Never boils.
Six thirty. Call the county council, we need an order. This is Ferraro. The pledge, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sembo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
President.
Mr. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I have a motion to prove the minutes of August twentieth.
Motion.
Alright, I think we have, uh, Ms. Fargo Hefner and Mr. Myers. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Alright, we got it. Alright, now, I had spoken with the county executive, and, uh, he's not gonna have a report tonight, per se, but he's available if we have any questions for him, and this was, I, I had to ask him about this, about moving it, so, uh, it's more or less along the lines of my request. What I wanted to do was, um, immediately go to courtesy of the floor, uh, because I was anticipating we might have some folks tonight that would be coming in to speak. Uh, I will read off the names. You come up to the podium, give your name, you have five, up to five minutes. Um, I would, uh, I, I, then, I will try to pronounce your names, but sometimes I, I, it doesn't go well, so, if I make a mistake, please come up and just, just give the correct pronunciation of your name. Alright, uh, we'll start, I have Michelle Zolka, I believe it is, come on up. And if you would, uh, make sure you speak into the microphone and, uh, so for our folks at home.
My name is Michelle Zolka, and I live on Little Creek Road in Lower Mount Bethel Township. Um, I have three of these, you don't have to look at them now, just gonna pass them out. And I'll explain what that is. I'm here because of some new information I've found. I just handed out a spreadsheet with the Northampton County Bridge Inspection Condition Ratings and Postings. That allows us to determine which bridges were deemed structurally deficient. To be structurally deficient, the deck, super or sub, and you'll see this on the, on the Excel sheet, has to be in poor condition or worse, which is a code four. Or the bridge has to be posted for a weight limit. This data was taken from PennDOT's website and is current as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. There's not enough information on that Excel sheet to determine functional obsolescence. But I spent some time highlighting the bridges, their locations, and whether they're in worse shape than Bridge Forty-One on Little Creek Road, which is needlessly slated for replacement. Bridges in worse shape are highlighted in red, Bridge Forty-One is highlighted in green. I thought I might compare that list of bridges highlighted in red with the list of bridges that are on the P-three project. I filed a right-to-no request on eight twenty-four for a current list of in-project bridges. My request is still pending, according to the response that says they need a legal review. The nature of the quest, request precludes a response with the, within the time limit, it requires retrieval, and there are staffing limitations. Please know that past right-to-no requests have been unequivocally denied. So I decided to find my own list in the meantime, because I'm not holding my breath for transparency. So this is a list of the original bridges slated for work in the P-three. I am.
Thanks, Michelle.
When I began my comparisons, I kept in the back of my mind that some bridges have, uh, been removed and swapped since two thousand and eighteen, but due to lack of information, I went with that original list. So, as of June, two thousand and twenty, on the Excel sheet, there are sixteen bridges that are in poor condition, which is worse than Bridge Forty-One. So when I searched for these needy sixteen bridges on the P-three, uh, sheet, I found that only three matched between the two sets of information. Now, again, some bridges were swapped, but still, close to thirteen bridges in Northampton County need help, yet are being ignored, while, again, sorry to sound like a broken record, to fulfill a faulty contract, bridges that completely surpassed the federal government's baseline sufficiency rating of fifty for replacement are being replaced. So, what about Bridge Thirty-One in Lower Mount Bethel Township, which is closed? What about Meadows Bridge, which is closed and currently in limbo? Aren't they better candidates for P-three money? And that's only two bridges in the county. I'm sure that there are more that I'm not aware of. This P-three bridge replacement is bigger than just Bridge Forty-One. And the argument that Bridge Forty-One will be more expensive to replace later is bogus. It's just an excuse for ease of fulfilling a faulty contract. Repair what's needed and replace what's needed. I'm almost done. Krieger Construction will get their money, but it should be taxpayer money well-spent. Use taxpayer money not for the convenience of the construction company, but for community need. Please don't ignore the situation, because it's the path of least resistance. You were elected to serve the public, and the public isn't being served in this instance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next I have, uh, Jeanette Leggett. Is that correct? Oh, yes, there you go. Hi, Jeanette, come on up, you have five minutes.
Should I leave mask on or off while I'm up here talking?
You know what, you can take it off.
You think that's okay? Alright, I just don't wanna.
I don't know, the nurse, the nurse expert told us we're doing it.
I'm good.
You can lower the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll lower the mic.
Alright, great, alright. Uh, my name's Jeanette Leggett, I'm a resident of Lower Mount Bethel Township, I've been here, um, a number of times before. So here's what we know right now. In March of two thousand and sixteen, Northampton County Council committed thirty-eight point five million dollars to the P-three project for work with thirty-three bridges in Northampton County. By August of two thousand and seventeen, the residents of Little Creek Road were seeking information about how this would affect our township. Petitions were signed and mailed, requests were made, and we began attending GPA and county council meetings. Uh, we continue to do so today, and we are still waiting to have answers to some very basic questions. In addition, um, county council and the GPA continue to ignore Lower Mount Bethel Township's Board of Supervisors unanimous resolution submitted to you folks to swap Bridge Forty-One for Thirty-One. And again, I'm assuming everybody knows what Forty-One and Thirty-One are right now. Um, that was sent in, um, just recently, in two thousand and eighteen, the, um, the resolution. We all know that no one knows how or why these thirty-three bridges were chosen, um, including the, uh, Northampton's County Superintendent of County Bridges for over thirty years, Tom Kohler. Multiple experts have clarified that Bridge Forty-One does not need to be replaced. Replacing Bridge Forty-One is a clear misuse of over one million dollars in tax dollars that, as taxpayers, we're hoping you are concerned how they are spent. Both county council members and GPA members have acknowledged that they would not have put Bridge Forty-One on the list. Both county council members and GPA members know that Bridge Thirty-One is currently closed, and it allows access to the Delaware River for river rescue and for the refilling of fire department water trucks. Its closure affects the safety of our residents. Both county council and members of the GPA have made it very clear to all of us that they did not make these choices or create this problem. As elected members, you surely know that you sometimes inherit the bad decisions of those before you. By choosing to do nothing, you are in fact then complicit in the misuse of millions of dollars. So each of you here has a decision to make. Is this the moment you will decide if you are one who steps back, blames others for this current situation, and leaves your community feeling abandoned as millions of tax dollars are misspent? Or you one that's gonna step up, take action, and show your community that you care about them, their safety, and how millions of tax dollars are used? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have, um, I apologize, I moved the sheet. I have Jason Ruff. Ruff, you come up and.
Good evening. I know some of you. So my name is Jason Ruff, uh, I was born and bred here in Northampton Borough, uh, Northampton County. Currently living in, uh, Sladington, two fifty-six Long Alley, um, and I'm currently Sladington Borough Council Vice President. I watched the video of your eight twenty meeting, uh, two weeks ago. I also took a look at your Home Rule Charter, and because I'm currently running for a state rep seat uh, that is split between both Lehigh and Northampton Counties, uh, I do have a stake in what happens in Northampton County. I understand that many of you had the best intentions for moving forward with amending the Home Rule Charter, but this referendum that you spoke of, uh, on eight twenty, and course of action, is dangerous. And I just wanted to come tonight to express my thanks to everyone who used the last two weeks uh, to really connect with local leaders and allow, uh, yourselves to be educated with an open mind. Um, I wanna thank everyone for their willingness to, uh, to actually drop the issue. I don't see it on tonight's agenda, so thank you. Um, and having come to the realization that people's basic human rights do not belong on a ballot, especially af- after having already been solidified by our Supreme Court. Now, I do actually think that the Lehigh Valley is becoming a more accepting and welcoming place, but there are still those who live in the shadows, and I believe that as elected leaders, we have an obligation to all of our citizens to make sure that we are creating communities where we can all be safe and all be open and all have the opportunity to thrive. For those of you that I know personally, thank you for your commitments to working together. Whatever you guys did together, uh, over the last two weeks, um, is leadership, thank you, um, and doing what's best for our citizens. Uh, for those of you that I don't already know, I do look up to you as elected leaders, and I know it isn't always easy or comfortable to operate with integrity, but it's our promise to those that'll elect us to operate with that integrity. Please do not override the executive's veto tonight. I know that it's not on the agenda, but I also know that things can pop up and not be on the agenda, right? We do it all the time in Sladington as well, it's called new business. He is actually just exercising his integrity and his leadership and doing what the elected people, uh, doing what the voters elected him to do. So I do look forward to working with many of you in the future on, uh, on legislation that actually does make things better for any marginalized community, not just the LGBTQ community, all, every marginalized community here in Northampton County. And again, thank you for the opportunity to share these comments, um, and thank you again, always, for listening.
Thank you. Okay, um, next I have Tony Harrison, I believe it is.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Tony Harrison, I am a resident of Eastern PA, Northampton County. Been, uh, in the valley since nineteen seventy-seven. I'm here on behalf of the RCO. As you can see, I'm not a young man anymore. Uh, I went through an electrician apprentice program, started at age forty-six. Can call it a midlife crisis if you'd like, but it was the best decision I ever made. I spent twenty-three years in corporate America, sitting behind a desk managing people. Once I got into this program, it's been invaluable as to what we do. It's a five-year program. That's a hundred and eighty-four hours per year. If you add it up, it's around a hu- nine hundred and twenty hours for the whole program. Eight thousand hours of on-the-job training. Now, wherever I go, I'm constantly, and I apologize for this, looking up to see the electrical work that's been done. Because I know everyone in my organization takes pride in the work that they do. We don't believe in taking shortcuts. I've seen and heard situations where you hire a contractor, and they'll sub out the work to less qualified individuals. These five years that I've had have given me invaluable experience. The people I've worked with and continue to work with continue to pour into my education. Today, tomorrow is my last official day as an apprentice. Um, I will be seen as a journeyman, um, starting on Tuesday. And I, I, I can't tell you how invaluable this has been. Not only for me personally, but also being able to give back to my community and helping others. Um, and I, I despise seeing poor quality and workmanship, um, and people not taking pride in their work. So, this RCO that we're proposing, I would love to see it changed so that people can't use a backdoor to bring in less quality employees or workers, because someone's gonna inevitably have to turn around and pay again to get the correct job done. So, that's what I have to say.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
I just wanna, I wanna say this, and I didn't, no, it's, it's okay, Mr. Harrison, I didn't wanna interrupt Mr. Harrison, uh, but, uh, if you're here, I should point this out, for an ordinance, for, for example, the re- uh, Responsible Contractors Ordinance. Because it's an ordinance, and we're gonna probably vote on it tonight, and it allows public hearing. So, you can, if you wanna come up and speak now, you can, but you're also, you would also get a chance, or you can either this or wait until, uh, it comes up under Old Business, which should be very relatively soon, you will be given an opportunity to speak at that time. So I just wanted to point that out. So, um, I have the, uh, 'cause I know some folks walked in, and you can wait till it's introduced, or you can come up now, or, or brought up. The, uh, I have Scott Moser. Scott Moser.
Good evening, council, my name's Scott Moser, I live in Palmer Township, Northampton County. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran, and I support the amendments to the Responsible Contractors Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, next I have, apologize. I have Corinne, uh, is it Good, Good, I'm sorry, Good, I'm, I wanna say Goodyear, and I know that's not right. So if you could just come up and say your name.
My mom always said I should write Neader. Uh, my name is Corinne Goodwin. I'm the Executive Director of Eastern PA Trans Equity Project. Uh, we're a grassroots nonprofit organization that has a mission of empowering transgender people in the Lehigh Valley and actually all the surrounding counties, we cover a seven-county area here in Eastern PA. Um, we also focus on building community and promoting social justice. Uh, and our organization represents hundreds of Northampton County citizens. And I'm here tonight to really speak on behalf of those residents. Doesn't have, so, who them, uh, were very thankful when I called them today and said that they probably didn't need to appear tonight. So, thank you for that, um, because the fact of the matter is, is that coming out as a trans person, especially in a public area like this, can be very intimidating and very stigmatizing and frankly harmful. Fifty-seven percent of all transgender people have been rejected by their family. Twenty-nine percent have been homeless at some point in their life. Seventy-seven percent of all transgender students have been harassed or even assaulted in school, and only one in five teachers will intervene on their behalf. Thirty-seven percent of us have been discriminated against in medical settings, that includes me. Thirty-seven percent have been harassed or denied service in retail stores, that includes me. And twenty-seven percent of us go to bed hungry every single night. The impact of these issues obviously is isolation and depression, and unfortunately, the highest rates of suicide amongst any minority group in the nation. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to thank you, frankly, for listening over the last two weeks to our community. I'm thankful to our community who sent hundreds of letters to council and to Executive McClure. I'm thankful to all the civic organizations who reached out to talk about this issue. And I'm thankful really for you for listening. I know that it's difficult to make a change in the way that you view issues. I know it can be challenging to change your position publicly, it can be a hard pill to swallow. But here's the good news. The Supreme Court has affirmed that employment discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity is illegal. It's the law of the land. Other federal courts, just in the last thirty days, four courts, actually five now, because we had a ruling yesterday, have also signed on and have gotten the message, and they started ruling in cases involving housing and public accommodation and health care and education. And that means that there's no reason for the council to take any further action around the county charter, and there's absolutely no reason to put LGBTQ rights, or frankly, the rights of any minority, up for a vote on the ballot. All it does is further stigmatize people who are vulnerable. I'm also hopeful that, after tonight, that Northampton County citizens, transgender citizens, LGBTQ citizens of this county will know that their county council and all of their elected officials listen to them, listen to their concerns, and listen to their issues. And that frankly is why I'm here tonight, because it's important that you all know that we need you to listen. So, I wanna thank you all publicly for what I assume is gonna be doing the right thing and allowing Executive McClure's veto to stand. And I wanna thank you, and I'm looking forward to working for, with you on other issues affecting LGBTQ and transgender people down the road. My phone is always on, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Now, that was the last individual who signed up. Is there anyone who would like to address county council at this time? Uh, you're free to come up. Sir, if you would come up and identify yourself, and then you have five minutes.
My name is Pat McInerney, I also live in Lower Mount Bethel, I don't live on Little Creek Road, so I don't end up, uh, with the same problems that the people who live there will. But I just wanna point out one thing that I think that they left out, and that's in talking about switching the two bridges. If you read the paper, uh, if you, um, listened, you know, the other night, when, when all the sirens were going off in the whole county, there was a big fire that was going on at Med at, uh, at, uh, PPL. The, if the road going in there, the one road that, that was going in, should have had some sort of calamity happen to it, the trucks would not have been able to get there, because they couldn't come across the, the bridge that's currently closed, Bridge Thirty-One. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that, that that, that particular avenue does supply our fire department with a way to get to the, to the river to pump water in, but it's also a very vital, uh, roadway into the, the power plant should that have a situation like it had the other day. So if you compound that with an accident that occurred on the, on the one road that they were using, we would have had a real significant problem there trying to, trying to deal with that fire. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would? Alright, come on up, give your name. You have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Ed Lansbury, I work for the Pennsylvania Foundation for Fair Contracting. We monitor prevailing wage work throughout the state. And I'm here to talk about the, um, amendments to the RCO. So, um, the reason we do this is to ensure that, uh, the, the workers are paid properly uh, according to the laws, uh, provided by state and federal laws. The PAFFC is committed to public policies that reward work, ensure business growth, create broad-based prosperity that benefit workers, businesses, and taxpayers alike. The PAFFC is driven by the idea of raising the standards of the construction industry by protecting workers' rights, both union and non-union, increasing market share for responsible bidders, work opportunities for skilled craftsmen, and value for taxpayers. In my experience, many times there is no, when there is no RCO, the contractor doesn't follow the rules at all. Some don't even file the cer- certified payroll reports. Others don't file on time, and many don't file them correctly, or completely. An example, no explanation of fringe benefits or standard deductions. With an RCO, the contractor's experienced contractor and understands how the workers should be paid and how the reports should be filled out. You are less likely to have a fly-by-night contractor bid the project, the fly-by-night contractor doesn't want oversight into what they are not doing correctly, and stays in the shadows and bids work where the, where there is no RCO. The public gets more bang for its buck, because the workers are correctly compensated and more likely to spend money in the community as they have more money to spend. And tax money is paid correctly back to the community. One percent of an operator's wage is greater than one percent of a laborer's wage, which many times they substitute for. This is money the community is being cheated out of. The agency now has to worry less about oversight of wages and benefits as they're working with a tried and true contractor. This does not relieve the agency of its mandatory obligations to the workers, but does give you a level of confidence they are being compensated properly and the rules are being followed. Five, you are less likely to have illegal workers on your project, and less likely to have persons working for cash, which completely eliminates any local taxes the community should receive. Six, the community gets a better job overall as you are dealing with a contractor who is reputable and does not give back to the community, uh, and does give back to the community by having an apprenticeship program to teach future generations how this work is done in a safe, environmentally friendly way. Again, the community doesn't want mud washing into their creeks and asbestos and silica flying through the air, so this is another win for the agency and the community. Remember, many times we go for the bargain price on an item, we all do it at some point, only to be disappointed in the quality and product we purchase. If the contractor is willing to cheat its worker, who they have a relationship with on a daily basis, how do you think they will treat your agency? You will receive the, will you receive the project per the plan documents, i.e. the correct compaction, proper materials, correct thickness of blacktop, et cetera? And please don't forget that the prevailing wage rates are part of the bid package, as much as the above-mentioned items. And again, your agency has a responsibility to make sure the workers are paid correctly. RCOs contain requirements that ensure bidders and contractors are abiding by applicable walls and meeting their legal responsibilities. Such ordinances ensure that contractors are able to compete on a level playing field and, as well as protect workers from exploitation. RCOs provide assurance that responsible contractors and skilled workers are provided. RCOs provide assurance that responsible contractors and skilled workers are provided taxpayers with efficient and productive construction. Today, various public bodies across the state are adopting RCOs, creating safer work environments, more on-time completions, and lower cost. Responsible bidding is a win for businesses, workers, and taxpayers alike.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? All right. Seeing no one, let me point out, before we go on any further with our agenda. It's correct that there is nothing on the agenda tonight regarding the county executive's veto of the ordinance that was put out to change our Home Rule Charter. And I have not received any word from anyone up to, including today, on council that wished to make a motion to override the, the executive's veto. So, I saw no reason to put it on the agenda. I do, however, since there has been a great deal of discussion on this, and particularly in the past couple of weeks, and I know, I've talked to council members and with social media, I, I think there has been some, sometimes a distortion of what the intent was. And I, I'm going to allow county council members, if they wish, to say something to this topic. You have up to five minutes. I wouldn't take five minutes. We're not going to have a, a back and forth or anything like that. If you have something you'd like to say publicly on this issue, go ahead and say it. And then, we're going to move on with our business at hand. So, I'll start with Ms. Zirinsky, and I'm just going to go right around the horn. Would you like to address this issue at this point in time?
I just want to say thank you to the rest of the council members who reached out to different communities and listened to the LGBTQ community and what they wanted. I think it's important that we go to the source, especially when we're deciding issues of human rights. And I understand that the intention was to modify the Home Rule Charter. The mechanism by which we modify the Home Rule Charter, though, is obviously flawed when it puts human rights on a referendum. And thus, maybe we have to think about changing the process by which we do that. At this point in time, I'm very satisfied that the Supreme Court is the law of the land and that those rights will be protected regardless of what is in our Home Rule Charter. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Mr. Myers. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I pass. I'll pass.
Okay. Fine. Mr. McGee, would you like to make a statement?
Yeah, I'm glad the outcome turned out the way it was, the way it did. We understand, I understand your concerns now. I don't think we understood them two weeks ago. And again, I thought, I'm, I hope you guys are happy with the outcome. We certainly are here, at least I am. Thank you.
Mr. Lot?
Yeah, I kind of reflect what Bill just, Councilman McGee just stated. Though I would say, I would say this started a couple of months back. And we, we did table it to hear more information. And on something this important, sometimes it's very appropriate just to deal with one person or a couple of people, and it's very appropriate. But we do, we do have a, a, you know, we, we have a clerk, we have a, a president. And, and to me, there was, there was a problem with communication early on in this. Because, you know, when we tabled this at first, I do not believe we, we got one email or one phone call, two council as a whole, to pass. So, we made mistakes. I looked at this as, as a worker issue. And anytime, and workers should not be discriminated against for any reason, or any of these reasons for at least. So, to me, it was just adding something the charter, you know, should have. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the way we have to do it is a referendum. And, and I did not put enough value on, on the feelings of the community, which, after I talked to a leader in the community for about twenty minutes, I, I realized I had made a mistake. So, please, you know, reach out to council as a whole on these important issues, you know. And I apologize for my, my lack of sensitivity, you know, big picture. I thought this was a good thing. I, I missed the smaller picture, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Hefner?
It's probably going to sound really redundant as we go down the line, but, but I agree with my colleagues in that our intentions were never to hurt any member of any community. It was to change the charter. And as I said to people directly, and I'll say it tonight, I think I said in the paper, I really believe that we would have worked to fight to make this come true. But again, I can only look at things with my own lens, with my own inborn bias. And it's important to hear from others who really do have other experiences and see it in a different way. And I really appreciate those who did reach out and did communicate with us directly. And that being said, there are nine of us here. And nine, nine of us will listen, and nine of us need to hear things. And so, hopefully, we can keep the dialogue going in not just this matter, but other matters that come before us. Because again, I agree, it is a worker issue. And I just heard what Ms. Goodwin said. And I think that some of the issues you bring up are things that we do address in the county. So, if there's other areas that we need to be dealing with that, we need to hear from you, not just when something's up here for a vote. And so, I apologize. And I too wish there was a better way to do this. I believe it should be the law of the county as well. So, right now, it, it can't be, but we'll see what we could do in the future about that.
Ms. Farrow, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I was obviously absent last week, or two weeks ago. However, I can see what the purpose behind this was very loyal, good, and good, bringing the charter into compliance with federal law. But however, I was very uncomfortable without giving it to the public to vote on this. You had no idea how it was going to go, and it was scary. So, I think it just highlights another deficiency in our Home Rule Charter, a deficiency that needs to go before a Home Rule Stardage Commission, that whenever any kind of new law comes down through the federal courts or wherever, our charter should be able to be tweaked to, to be in sync, so the wording is the same. That's all I have to say, and I'm, I'm glad that we don't have to vote on this.
Ms. Kuzic, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, just briefly. If, if we were to write the charter today, certainly that language would be included. And, you know, I, I know there's been some suggestions about a Home Rule Charter study, and I think that that would be the appropriate time to do it, rather than a single referendum on this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Giovanni, is there anything you'd like to say?
I did, I'll tell everybody to sit down with council.
All right. Let me just wrap this up then. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Now, I've heard from all my members of council, there was no malicious intent, as a co-sponsor of this, to begin with. The last person in this room who'd want to do anything to discriminate against anybody is a man of color. Let's be clear about that. I want that point to be as crystal clear as we possibly can. What was meant to be something that was to be put in line with everybody else turned out to be a huge mistake on our part because of insensitivity to those who are struggling with other things. And as a person who knows what it's about to be discriminated upon, once this came to my attention, I went, whoa. And I think it's awfully important. So, I would like to apologize to the community for that and to understand that we will move forward what we got to do. And I don't know if this is appropriate time or not.
Go right ahead.
To put forth a resolution, is this the time?
If you want to, wait, let me, let me tie this up, and then I can acknowledge you. Are you finished speaking then?
I am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, let's, I want to tie this up in terms of the veto. I think it's, I know new business is coming up, but I, I did reach out to folks who I thought would be very involved, and they reached out to me, which I was thankful for. And because of this looming issue that overrides everything, which is COVID, I had a sense that this was not going to happen tonight, that there was, once we had more communication, it was obvious that the well-intended thought of changing our, our basic local constitution, while the right thing to do clinically was going to create, end up being taken as putting a life decision on the ballot. And I know with my, I don't want to repeat what they've said. I think that was, that's evident from what you heard. We've all had our own experiences in life. We all have family members and know people. And I know I've, I've always believed that people, it's the Constitution. I don't think it's questioned that how you want to identify yourself as a free individual in this country is, is your right and, and should not be infringed on. So, I guess in the sense that we tried to enshrine that in our charter as, that's what legislators do. I mean, legislators make law. Supreme Courts and courts rule on it. But I get nervous with settled law, because I think you could go back many, many years and see some cases that the Supreme Court decided that ended up not being settled law for one reason or another. I believe this is, because I believe this is on, on point with the Constitution. So, I would just say that for me, a positive outcome of this situation was how it spotlighted the importance of communication. After Adrian Shankar reached out to me, as to other, as he did to other council members, I more fully understood his concerns that extended far beyond what I thought was a well-intentioned action. I thank him for that. And I do want to point out, as has been said, it illustrates the need to, for us to be able to speak to each other and, and to reach out to one another, especially in this era of social media. Personal communication is now more important than ever. We, we must talk to each other, not at each other. Speaking is preferable to shouting, if possible. And social media all too often does not communicate real information, and oftentimes it, it can twist things in a way that was never intended. So, I would say we must reach on beyond today and, and go forward, remembering that if something does come up, if you, as an individual or as representing a group, please reach out to one of the, the president or vice president. If I had gotten information like this from somebody like Mr. Shankar, he and I spoke about this. In fact, we had a few conversations. I would have sent a memo to everybody. And so, I think that this was a learning experience for all of us, no matter how, how good we think we are doing or what we're trying to do, that there are always many facets to any issue. And I too apologize. Certainly, the last thing I believe anyone up here, and I know I don't, wants to do is hurt anybody. That was never the intent of this. And so, I, I'll leave my, that's all I have to say on that. So, that's the end of the discussion. I don't, there is not going to be a motion to override this veto under new business, and the veto is going to stand. So, now I'm going to, is there any other old business related to this? Mr. Myers?
Yes, there is. And before I read this resolution that I've asked to be drawn up, there's one very important thing. I know you said discussion's over, but I got to put this out there. There is nine of us on this council. We all have a job to do. We all have ears, mouths. We listen, we intake, we communicate. If we don't use that power, and if you don't use that power to get back and forth to us, none of this would have happened. Damn it, we got to talk to each other. It's as simple as that. If we don't talk, we don't hear, we cannot react. If we were made to look like fools, it's because we didn't use the power of this room. And shame on you for going to one person when you've got eight others to talk to. With that said, I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas, it is in the interest of Northampton County and its residents to eradicate discrimination in all of its forms. Whereas, is an intent of Northampton County to promote, protect the rights of all individuals to be free from discrimination. And whereas, Northampton County is to ensure the equal opportunity with respect to employment, housing, commercial property, real estate, education, public accommodation, lending practices, real estate practices are afforded to all individuals of equal terms without regard of race, color, ethnicity, national origin, religion, age, disability, source of income, marital status, family status, sex, sex orientation, or gender identity or expression. Whereas, Northampton County is to promote the rights, opportunities of all persons to particu, and to participate in the social culture, recreational, and economic life to ensure equal opportunity for all persons concerning employment, housing, accommodations, commercial property, real estate, education, public accommodations, lending practices, real estate practices, without regard to race, color, ethnicity, national origin, religion, age, disability, source of income, marital status, family status, sex, sex orientation, or gender identity or expression. It is now, and therefore resolved, by Northampton County Council as follows. The above captioned whereas clauses incorporated herein made material part of this resolution. Two, no individual shall be favored or disfavored with respect to any position of office in employment, housing, commercial, property, real estate, education, public accommodation, lending practices, real estate practices, because of age, race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, disability, sources of income, politics, opinions, affiliations, marital status, family status, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, expressions, or lawful activity in, in any employed organization. I think that says it all.
Thank you. Now, since Mr. Myers was one of the sponsors of the original ordinance, and he, he and I spoke, in fact, we've spoken a few times. And I know how strongly he felt, and I, and I feel I'm going to say this. I know how upset he was to think that somehow someone would take it, that he was actually asking people to judge other people on what they should do or not do. And he and I've had a few conversations about that. And then, you know, the discussion of, of a resolution whereby this doesn't go out to anybody. And I, and I know it's, it's settled, we talk about settled law, but I, I would point out three justices voted against it. So, you know, my concern is, is just that we do things, even though at times the state or the federal government has already ruled. I mean, you could probably get rid of a third of our charter and maybe half our personnel policies that we do here locally, because the person could say, you, you're violating my state or my federal rights. So, I mean, we, we end up doing these things. But the resolution is just the resolve of the council. We, we don't, this doesn't go out to people to vote on it, it's for us to discuss and vote. And Mr. Myers felt very strongly about his, his feelings about this issue. And so, that's where I believe this resolution came from. Now, open up discussion on this resolution. Does anybody on council have anything they'd like to discuss regarding this resolution? You don't need a second on resolution.
I agree completely.
All right. If there's no other, oh, Mr.
It's a comment, actually, for the last one. I, I didn't thank the county executive for vetoing the, the ordinance. Thank you very much.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I will ask for a vote. Ms. Embo?
Mr. Myers?
Absolutely.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Topped by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Very good. Thank everyone for having come forward. All right, now, we will go to our old business. And what we're going to do is, we're going to go to the public hearing on the ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 648-2018, entitled, an ordinance of Northampton County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, providing for the adoption of certain procedures related to the solicitation and award of public contracts within Northampton County, providing for certification requirements for public contractors. Contractors, Providing for Certification Requirements for Subcontractors to Public Contracts, Providing for Public Contract Review Processes, Repealing Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances Containing a Savings Clause, and Providing for an Effective Date." Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Myers introduced this in August 20th, 2020 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? And I know that I had mentioned earlier that if there were anybody here for this that didn't speak, if they'd like to come up and speak at this time, your comments are welcome. Would you just identify yourself then, if you do, and you have five minutes?
Good evening, council. My name is Bill Doorward. I represent workers all through the Lehigh Valley.
Sir, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Can you spell your last name?
D O R W A R D.
Thank you, sir.
I usually follow out with a political campaign with that. Forward with Doorward.
Sounds like a winner to me. Better than some I've seen.
So I represent workers all throughout the valley. I'm a business agent with the Sheet Metal Workers Local 19, and I stand here tonight in support of these changes. As a sheet metal worker for 30 years, who has worked on several projects throughout Northampton County, and as a representative, I've seen several occasions the taxpayers' money being wasted on projects that have been done and not done correctly. This has been a burden on the local or state entity and the taxpayers to have the project rebid and/or fixed by a qualified contractor. And so the project has cost the taxpayer twice the amount of what it should. In the times we are in, we as a society should do everything we can to be responsible custodians of taxpayers' monies, and be mindful of the health of our community and workers. If we use quality contractors and workers from the area who have been through a qualified apprenticeship program, you won't see these issues. In closing, I stand here tonight steadfast in support of these changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, anyone else? If there's no one else from the public that, okay, I'm sorry.
Evening, council. Mr. President, my name is Paul Anthony. I am a resident of Hanover Township on the Good Side, Northampton County. I do not have a catchy phrase like Billy Doorwood, but I do represent the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers Local 375, and I'm in here for support of the RCO. There's some language in there that we're looking to modify, you know, talking about the Class A apprenticeship equivalent, and I'm not really here to argue or make a case for that, but part of your, the RCO is about workforce development. With many of you, I've been at many presentations on workforce development and what that actually means. RCO has a component of that, of workforce development. So if you have an apprenticeship, and it spells out Class A apprenticeship, one of the requirements is to have an apprentice graduate in three years, right? Our apprenticeship right now, we just topped out, topping out is an industry term, right? Mr., the guy from 102, sorry, brother?
Harrison.
Brother Harrison? He's going to top out tomorrow. That's a milestone, and that's life-changing and career-changing, okay? So this year, we're a smaller local, but we topped out 21 apprentices in June. Our incoming class next year will be 25 apprentices that we're going to indenture next week. They start their OSHA 30, and then that'll put us over 100 apprentices, all right? So I hear about apprenticeship and a problem of graduating somebody in three years. If a contractor cannot be part of a program that graduated somebody in three years, one person, all they're looking for is one person, one person like Mr. Harrison, you cannot graduate somebody like that. That is not contributing to workforce development at all, okay? I've heard other contractors, some GC saying, well, I have a crew of, my crew consists of men that are with me 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. I really don't need an apprenticeship. I already have my crew. Those 30-year guys are starting to gray, right? Next week, I hit that age where I'm starting to gray, okay? You have, sorry, I shouldn't look at you, Lori. I'll look at Kevin. You have to replace those people. You have to be part of a responsible contractor and be a part of an apprenticeship. You're not going to, Mr. Harrison talked about his apprenticeship for five years. You're not going to replace the 30-year-old guy just coming right out of a school, we'll just say some kind of technical school, okay? That is also being workforce development. And why is workforce development so important to the county? It's economic development. Whenever somebody comes in front of us, whether you're on a workforce board or economic development, there's different categories and criteria they look at, right? Workforce development's not the top, but skilled labor is always in that category. It's location, housing, schooling, but a skilled workforce is always there. And by this RCO and that workforce development in there component, you're supporting what we do, and I appreciate that, okay? There's something else in there about lowering the threshold from 250,000 to 100,000, okay? I'm a taxpayer. I value my money that I pay in taxes, whether it's a $38 million project or $100,000 project. We want a quality job at $100,000, okay? All you're doing, look, if right now it's 250, you're looking for contractors that are liable, that if they're going to bid these projects, they can't do it all, and you know what happens? Project's not on time, cost overruns, somebody starts a project, abandons it for a year. The residents come in to you, and you hear about it all the time. We need to lower that threshold to down to 100,000. I'm in total support of that. The other part of that is subcontracting, that subcontractor could come in, and I'll use Electrical for reference. If we were to renovate this floor here, Electrical would be over 250, but that contractor, the way this RCO is right now, can sub some of that out. He could sub out the fire alarm, he could sub out the audiovisual, your voice data, right? We could install the best lighting, most energy-efficient, dimmable LED fixtures, but if your computers and phones don't work, you're going to hear about it. That's just a back way into circumventing the RCO and the intent of it. So I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
No. Is that it?
May I ask a question? I'm a big proponent, believe me, I'm a retired teacher, and I'm a big proponent of these kids, you know, getting these skill trainings. And I know the community college, CIT. Okay, how are you, are you affiliated with them at all?
I'm affiliated with Lehigh County and Northampton County.
CIT and?
CIT, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harrison's from Local 102, which covers Easton. His union is affiliated with CIT.
Okay, good.
Right.
Anything else?
All right, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate every one of you, and I appreciate you that you're representing my county. Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else in the public, oh, I'm sorry, I saw hands fly up. Come up and please identify yourself, you have five minutes.
Do we want to Gary, M O N T E G A R I? I have that problem all the time. Anyway, so getting back to this, getting back to the Class A apprenticeship for this RCO, I've had the privilege for the last seven years of being an instructor out of an apprenticeship program. And the apprentices that come through our program are bar none the best that you see out in the field right now. We have a minimum requirement out in the field and training site training of 1,000 hours, classroom training of a minimum of 80 hours, and safety training of 80 hours yearly for four years. I have guys that have come in from a non-union side and have done training, three-week programs that are supposed to come out and do exactly what our guys do after four years, end up becoming apprentices, and we retrain them all over again because they have not been trained properly, and they have not been taught to do the stuff that we do as a skill trade safely. So I just wanted to put that out there, let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Another hand flew up. If you want to come up, please, and identify yourself.
How you doing? My name's Anthony Mosley. I am a product of the four-year apprenticeship program with the Operating Engineers Local 542. And to piggyback off of what Monte Gary said, who was actually my instructor and made sure that he taught me and I learned everything properly. I'm in the field, I see what the, see what the non-union side does as well as what we do, and not bragging or boasting or comparison, but there is just a certain level of pride and integrity that we carry in what we do. And the way that we learn, like you said, is by far in advance to the guy that maybe have done it for 10 years, but we are around people who've done it for 30 and 40-plus years. So, you know, we absorb that information, and it allows us to do the job thoroughly so we don't have to cause the, you know, our taxpayers' money and do things correctly. So I just wanted to say that. It's helped me and my family a great deal. I just had a little boy, just turned 9 months, so, you know, it's amazing program. It does wonders for the community, and we couldn't be happier to be a part of that brotherhood. And I think I speak for myself and my apprenticeship brothers when I say this RCO is definitely beneficial for us, and we need this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, oh, all right, yes, you, come on up, and if you would please just give your name, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Randy Everly. I'm the field representative with Bricklayers and Allied Craft Workers Local 5, Pennsylvania. As a representative that represents members in the Lehigh Valley, Northampton County, I see the benefit of this RCO for the, for Northampton County, the greater Lehigh Valley, and the taxpayers. We see our contractors do extensive training to make sure our members have the skills and the work habits to complete the job. Our apprentices receive at least 144 hours per year to make sure that they have their OSHA training, skills training, and they have the tools they need to get the job done. So I would just like to support the RCO and just speak about, you know, the advantages the county has, what the advantages are for the community, the workers, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, no, there's a lot of hands that went up. Come on, sir, I can, I see your hand, I don't see you. Come on up. Just identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
My name's Kevin McGee. I've been in the building trades for 44 years. I just retired. I raised a family on it. I did a lot of good things with it, all right? We owe it to the people that are investing in the area to make sure that they have a job that's done right, on time, no problems. They're putting investment in our area. They want it done right. That's going to make them do more. So that's what I have to say. I raised a family on this, it's my trade and all that stuff, I did everything like that. But what I'm saying to you people is, we owe it to the people that are taking the time to come to the Lehigh Valley in this area and invest their money, hard-earned money, in this area for our jobs, for people that are around, and this is the way to do it. They see that job going right, they see that job going fine, they're going to build another building. They're going to do something else, okay? That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening to me, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, now, I know, come on up. You've heard my speech. If you could give your name, you have five minutes.
I'll make it real quick. Thank you, council, for giving me an opportunity to talk. My name is Justin Grimshaw. I also represent a lot of people in Lehigh and Northampton County, but I'm listening to a lot of people in the room today, and I agree with everything they're saying except one point of it. I don't see this as a union bill. I see it as a responsible contractor bill to taxpayers and the tax money that is being spent within the county. This isn't a union, non-union issue, it's a taxpayer issue. It's a responsible contractor issue. It's about the taxpayers that spend their money, that have their money here, spending their money here from people who live here, bringing the money back and spending it back here so we can do it again, and do it again, and do it again. That's what it's about. It's not union, it's not non-union, it's responsible contractors. I urge every county councilman sitting up here to vote yes tonight on this addendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Come on up.
My name's Ed Bates. I just want to say, I'm a graduate of an apprenticeship program, and something that's missed is, it's a living wage as an apprentice that I made. I was able to buy a home as a second-year apprentice. There is no equivalent program to a real apprenticeship. I worked at a company before I joined the apprenticeship that was supposed to teach me, putting me in situations where I could have been hurt. I didn't know what I was doing on large pieces of equipment, just go out there without any training, and it can't be that way. With what I learned in the four years of my apprenticeship, invaluable, all the safety, and I urge you to go with the amendments for the RCO.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wanted to address council on this? Come on up, sir.
You won't need the timer on this one, I'll be brief. Kevin Lewis, council representative with the Eastern Atlantic States Regional Council Carpenters. We represent 323 local carpenters here in Northampton County. I just want to make two points. Moving the threshold on this RCO is simply just cleaning up the language. As we all know, anything under $100,000 can be executed by the county executive. If it comes to county council, there's a gray area between 100,000 and 250,000. Does it fall under the RCO, does it not? By lowering the threshold to 100,000, there's no doubt when it comes to county council's desk, it's going to be covered by the RCO. It also lines up with the adjacent counties, Bucks County and Lehigh County, both have $100,000 thresholds. My other comment is regarding the Class A apprenticeship. I see a lot on social media that we need to promote the skilled trades like we do at university or a college. By amending this RCO, that is county council's commitment to supporting the skilled trades just like a four-year diploma. So I would urge all county council members to vote in favor of lowering the threshold and strengthening the Class A apprenticeship. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Seeing none, I'm going to open this up now to council for discussion. Ms. Zerinski, and then Mr. Myers.
I just want to say that we voted on this previously, and in the previous language, I had suggested that we use Class A or the equivalent of. And I think at this time, sorry, I think at this time, that language isn't really necessary. When we were debating this prior, there were some discrepancies about how Class A would be perceived as maybe only a union. Since this time, other ordinances that did not have that language had been tested. One of the reasons why we, why I suggested adding it, because I thought that it would hold up in court better. But since that time, it's obvious that the language that is written in the ordinance that we have before us is sufficient to stand up in court, and it has. I'm very satisfied with this. I think that it's going to create high-paying jobs for individuals in our county, and I've listened to everybody here, and I've heard some really moving stories over the last, like, couple weeks, talking to people about this. And I can't not be moved by the fact that people's lives are changed by the salaries and by the apprenticeships that they have gone through in this training. So I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, had you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I will. First of all, thank you for coming here and speaking to us tonight. It gives me great pride to be the co-sponsor of this because you're looking at a gentleman who started in the apprenticeship program as an operating engineer. My body said hell no, so I had to find something else to do. You're damn right, that's what it was. Cranes beat my body up. But more than anything else, right now, I sit up here and I see a very good friend of mine, a childhood friend of mine, who's sitting out there right now that went through the apprenticeship program, and Ernie Williams, we've known each other since we were kids, and he's an electrician now. To see folks that I grew up with, and I, young man, I'm proud of you for going through the program, it's very hard and very strange, very different not to see, if you get to the city, you see folks like me doing these jobs. But more importantly, I appreciate- But more importantly, I appreciate what you guys do because it's done right. And I appreciate the work and effort that you do. I'm all for apprenticeship programs for one reason, more than anything else. There are people in my community who aren't eligible for college. And they need a trade. What better way to make a good living than going into these programs? And you gentlemen out there, before you leave or do anything else, all you guys that got apprenticeship programs, give me the information because I'm going to send you some bodies.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? No? Oh, Peg.
I'm just being, I'm not being facetious, but I have never seen so much skill in front of me. And I have a chimney that's been leaking for four years. And I have had one contractor after another, I'll give you the whole litany, but if you find me somebody who can find the water leak. I want your name.
I'm glad we could help you, Ms. Ferraro, in getting your chimney.
Take care of an old lady.
Are you finished then?
I am.
John Cusick.
So, you know, I supported the initial RCO and I think it was a good thing. I still do. But, you know, one of my concerns has been we've seen a decrease in the number of competitive bids and that troubles me. In order for this system to work that we have, we need competitive bids. And I'm a little hesitant to move forward until we can get more competitive bids with the existing thresholds and requirements.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. McGee, go right ahead.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out to speak tonight. I heard some things and learned some things myself. I think it's important, I think there's a sweet spot on county contracts between $100,000 and $250,000. If you have a $400,000 contract that would be over the threshold and you split it up, which sometimes they have to do, sometimes administration has to split contracts up. It's because it's good business practice or whatever. So now you look at the amount of money that these, this sweet spot between $100,000 and $250,000. For a county, I think, I think there's a lot of those size contracts. So you start stacking them up and you start looking at how much value of hard-earned taxpayer dollars are involved in that, in these contracts. And I think, I didn't get the numbers, I've been researching some of my notes, I kind of looked at last year's, how much were under 100, 250, and there was, there was pretty many of them. And so, and I see that some are getting split again. So I just think we need that need, we need to fulfill the gap there. It's a layer of, it's a layer of protection for the county council when they, when they vote on contracts. We're part-time, sometimes we don't have the time to ask all the questions. And there's some really good questions in these RCOs. So I'm very proud that we have one. I hope everyone will support it. And I do, I do share the concern with Mr. Cusick on getting bids. I think that, I think that we just need to do a better job as a county of soliciting the projects. And I think once we get rolling, we're going to have a nice skilled workforce and it's going to promote good contractors, ones that actually put their money into their employees and to their training programs. And thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Giovanni, go right ahead.
I'm all for responsible contractors and I believe that's a good RCO we have. But again, my concern with John is, John Cusick, Mr. Cusick, is that we're not getting enough competitive good bids on our jobs and that's a concern for me.
All right, I'd like to go to Ms. Vargo Hefner. I think, oh, is there someone else that wants to speak?
I'm just looking at Mr. Lot.
Mr. Lot, did you want to say something?
Sure, if I'm being encouraged too.
No, he's pointing at you.
You know, I think, first of all, I think it's truly a workforce development issue. Mr. Anthony brought that up. I sat on that board and we, as taxpayers, spend a lot of money at workforce development. I mean, we hand out, we will go out with a company and set up apprentices, work with the company to set up apprenticeships. We spend taxpayers' money doing that. We also pay for interns for companies. Some are interns. The company don't pay, we pay, taxpayers pay. So we spend a lot of money out there trying to develop workforce. This RCO actually does that, it encourages that. It encourages our businesses, non-union contractors alike, to get involved with their apprenticeship. We're already heavily invested as taxpayers. This is just kind of setting a tone. We, and, you know, we got some letters from some contractors that were against it. We're a government body, we should set the standard. And I believe we're doing that here. I mean, private businesses do it, but they do it on their own without, you know, a name of RCO. We want, you know, they do PLA, Sands, the owner of Sands when it was built, signed a project labor agreement. He did that not because he likes labor unions, he hates labor unions, the owner of that Sands company. He did it because he realized he's getting a better product, he's getting a trained workforce, he's spending a lot of money on materials and he wanted them installed, right? And he wanted access to a workforce that could get the job done quickly. And that's, that's why. So it's out there, really workforce development, it's an invest, this is, this is encouraging businesses to invest in their employees. And that's what we want to do as a government, I believe, is encourage people to do the right thing. And everybody out there says apprenticeship is the right thing. So I don't know how you could make this a bad thing. Was that too long? Thank you.
I guess you feel Shel Adelson is just not a proponent.
He did talk nice about us at the end of the project. Thank you.
All right, I believe now we've heard, Ms. Hefner, go right ahead.
My goodness, there's no way to follow all of you, but it's been wonderful that, I'm so glad that everybody came out tonight to speak to this because we do, like I said before, we need to hear from our constituents. And I want to say thank you to our brother from the Marines for his service and for being here tonight. And also, because I heard that. And I love the gentleman that spoke and said that he changed careers and that, what's the term? I missed the term.
Hopping out.
Hopping out? Well, congratulations on your hopping.
Hopping, topping.
Whatever, I have electrical issues too. Well, yeah. Jimmy knows my house. I have a lot, I'll meet all of you. Look, why I did this and why I proposed this, you've all said it. We need to close the gap on the number. We need to be equal to Lehigh County, we need to be equal to Bucks County, we need to close the gap and have equivalency in that vein, in the financial vein across the valley. You know, I keep hearing, we're going to get less bids, oh, it's because you're not getting enough bids. Well, maybe we'll get more quality bids. And that's what I'm interested in. We are already a cautionary tale on one big project that we heard from tonight and we're going to keep hearing from till it's done in terms of how it wasn't bid and, you know, somebody said work stoppage for a year. We've lived through that on that project. I don't want to see it for anything else for this county. And I just appreciate the training aspect and the quality program, you know? My parents were laborers. My father was a union member after his term in the service. My mother worked in a factory doing piecework. I don't think she had a union. I think she did and she didn't. So my heart is, and I've worked on both sides of the fence. The other thing is I got a lot of letters about this. You know, some people are anti and I won't get a job and they're not here tonight to talk to me about that. But I heard from people who aren't union members who say, I support this. And I'm not a union member, but I do have an apprenticeship program and I believe in this. So I don't believe this is just a union issue. I think if somebody wants to commit and dedicate themselves to training people, this will encourage them to do so. And we all know that we need trades. I certainly do at 1481 Sandbrook Court. So, thank you all for being here and I heartily support this 100%.
All right, well, let's call for the vote. I think everybody's discussed this. Zumbo?
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
No.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Very good. And thank you to all who showed up.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to go to a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the 2020 Northampton County Budget." Department of Community and Economic Development, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Administration, Office of District Attorney, Court Services, Court Administration, Department of Corrections, Department of Public Works, and Department of Human Services. Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Myers introduced this ordinance at the August 20 meeting. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance from the public? Seeing none?
Okay.
If you can hear, let's have a discussion.
Peg's trying to find the mace.
So a discussion by counsel on the amendment. It was introduced by Ms. Hefner and Ms. Myers, as I said.
No, I think we've done, we've gone over it several times, correct?
These things are often, yeah, it was introduced, was discussed, the committee, but I mean, I have to, I have to ask. So if there is none, we'll go right to the vote.
Is Mr., is Steve here?
Steve is over.
He's on his phone, like he always does.
I just have a question about the P3 clarification one more time. I'm sorry to drag him out of his corner, but thank you. What is the P3 on here?
The what?
The P3 is on here? Is on the, there's a Public Works Bridges P3 on here? Cost reimbursement? Why is, an adjustment on here?
I believe it is because there was a fee in the P3 that was paid twice.
That was what? I'm sorry.
It was paid twice.
Okay.
And we had to adjust it back out. That is what I believe is the, on the document before you.
All right, I just want, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion? If there is none, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Lease with the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission for Mincy Lake Upper Mount Bethel Township, Pennsylvania." Ms. Zerinsky and Mr. Giovanni introduced this at the August 20 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Discussion by counsel. Anybody have anything to say? This was also discussed before. If not, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 617, 2017," entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Conveyance of," these new glasses that I have to get used to, "Conveyance of Permanent and Temporary Easements Owned by Northampton County Located in Lower Nazareth Township to the Eastern Suburban Water Authority to Enable Them to Provide Public Water Through Its Public Water System." This was introduced by Ms. Zerinsky and Mr. McGee on August 20. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Mr., before we get into a full-blown discussion, Mr. McClure has requested to make a comment.
Just very briefly, Mr. President, we're on agenda item number four. Is that correct? I'm sorry?
It's the one for the easement.
Yes.
Yes, I mean.
No, it's repealing the ordinance.
Repealing.
It's repealing the ordinance for the public water system.
Number four.
We have obtained some information that counsel had requested, which I believe has been forwarded to Mr. Spadoni. If not, it will be thusly. I'd respectfully request, and I realize the charter doesn't invite me to participate in council meetings, so apologies, but I respectfully request that this be tabled this evening after conclusion of the public hearing.
I will table it.
I'm sorry, what?
I will make a motion to table it. Done.
All right, yeah, yeah.
It's tabled, we can't talk about it.
We have to withdraw.
All right, would you please withdraw your table motion?
Okay.
Just for a minute?
For a minute?
Just procedurally.
For a hot second.
Okay. Now, there was, because it was, there was a questions or comments from the public. Seeing none?
Now can I table it? I will make a motion to table it.
I will second that.
All right, there's no discussion. Call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Motion to, I think a table is adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Is there any other old business anyone wants to bring up, discuss? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. We have an introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 2,400 Rentable Square Feet of Space at 31C West First Street, Wind Gap, Pennsylvania, from Joseph DePew, Pennsylvania." Is someone?
I'll sponsor.
All right, Mr. Giovanni sponsors and you will second. Very good. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the September 17, 2020 meeting.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
Who's the district judge there right now, currently in that office?
I can't answer that question.
Schlegel.
Schlegel? Okay.
Can I answer it for you?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on. Next is introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 3,500 Rentable Square Feet of Space at 1214 Stephco Boulevard, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, from Dieter Family Limited Partnership." Does someone wish to sponsor the ordinance? Ms. Vargo Hefner, Mr. Myers, the second. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the September 17, 2020 meeting.
Mr. President, same point of clarification.
Sure.
Who's the current district justice?
Engels. Judge.
I know. All right, don't want to disrespect the judges. Consideration of the Approval of Municipal Assistance Funding Via the COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant Resolution. Mr. Lot, would you please introduce this resolution?
This is the money coming out of CARES Act. I'm going to skip down to whereas, granted, whereas a recommendation attached here to and made a part here of Exhibit A has been presented to the Northampton County Council's Community and Economic Development Committee totaling $3,610,422 in a grant fund for 16 projects. Now, therefore be resolved by council of the County of Northampton. Number one, that the recommendation, excuse me, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved. Two, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute any and all necessary grant agreements with the applications. Do not exceed the approved amount for each grant. We discuss this in committee meeting.
All right. All right, uh, we have, and by the way, I mean, we have, I know Mr. Government, but we have members of the chamber here on this for this thing. Is there any questions, discussion on this?
This is on the municipal part, right?
Municipal, this is municipal.
Okay, um, yeah. Quick, quickly, just on the municipal part, I have a hard time with the replacement of a pumping station being related to COVID-19, so I'll be voting against this.
Are there any other questions or concerns regarding this?
If this comes back, they gotta pay for it, right?
We're not on the hook for it.
We're not.
Once we turn the money over, whether they don't use it, or they pay for it, or whatever they do, they're, the community in question is the one that's responsible. We've done our part once we've given them money.
Okay, that isn't my question.
And we heard that, if I may, we heard they did their due diligence, so...
Right. Um, okay, so if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Uh, next is consideration of the approval of Appendix B of Small Business Grant Recommendations. Uh, Mr. Lot, would you take this one, too?
I'm gonna skip the standard whereases and just get to the bottom.
The whereas, uh, the recommendations attached here to and made a part here of Exhibit A
have been presented to Northampton County Council Community and Economic Development Committee totaling $3,610,442. Am I reading the wrong one? Yes, I am. Let me start again. I apologize. We did the grant, and this one is, this, we also discussed quite a bit in committee meeting. This is the business, small business grants that the chamber has worked with us on, and I'll try to do the right one now. Whereas the recommendation attached here to and made part of hereof Attachment B has been presented to Northampton County Council Community and Economic Development Committee totaling $4,616,397.91 in grant funds for 349 small businesses. And now, therefore be resolved by the council of the County of Northampton. Number one, that the recommended grants in Appendix B are approved. Two, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applicants. Do not exceed approved amounts for each grant. In, and just to report, in committee meeting, there was duplicate, business was on it. That is corrected now in this, in the new appendix.
So what happened? Was it duplicate?
Uh, Mr. Barron's going to come up and explain.
So I ran a D-dup, we were running a D-dup, and I did not, a de-duplication. Like if there's a duplication, I dumped the duplication. Sorry. It's an Excel term. I apologize. So I, I ran that function in Excel, and we, I didn't save the address list when I kicked that business out, so I apologize for that.
So did I catch it?
You did catch it, yes.
And I still didn't find Porter's Pub on there.
Just one for Kohler, then.
Porter's Pub is on there.
Okay.
If you, if you look on...
That is now on the record.
So the yes, the yes, yes, Larry, you're getting your money if you're watching. The, um, the yes/no list was a W-9 list that should not have been on there. I did not save the right version. And if you look on the, it should be, the LLC name is on your left, and then it's first name, last name of the person applying for the grant, and then there's DBA, Doing Business As. And if you look in that column, Ms. Zarinski, you will see Porter's Pub on there.
Thank you.
Hopefully, going forward, we can have a little bit bigger print.
For these old eyes.
Or get some magnifying glasses, or big ones. All right. Mr. Lot, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I would, I know I stated at the council, a committee meeting, but I just wanted to say it to the public. You know, we pay the chamber to administer this, these grants, and what the chamber has decided to do with their administration fee is put it in your Main Street Grant Program, which basically what that just did is made us, 100% of that CARES money is going back to our small businesses and back to our street. I mean, they could have easily paid Brittany, you know, and Ms. O'Donnell. Thank you, Jess, I didn't see behind the pole there, but they chose to put it right back on the street, and that helps the county in many different ways, but I thought that was worth stating. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think our working relationship with the chamber has gone very well, and things have gone extremely well from the county and the chamber's point of view, so thank you for that. And is there any other discussion on this? If not, we'll just call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Does anybody have any new business they want to bring up? One, two, three. Okay, seeing none. Council committee reports. Go ahead, Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Before the meeting tonight, we had the Human Services meeting. We discussed Suicide Prevention Month, and we all have swag now to be, create awareness about people with issues and depression, and hopefully the good work the task force is doing to prevent suicide in the county. Also, we heard from Rema from New Zealand, I still didn't get her last name, who's doing the predictive risk model for our children and youth workers, and it sounds like a very exciting project.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give a committee report? Or Mr. Lot, go right ahead.
Sure. Today, at our committee meeting, we went over these grants, the municipality grant and a small business grant. We also had a presentation by a small business group, Northampton Community College, and I'm missing one. Ben Franklin. Thank you. And a lot of what we discussed was brought forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, let's go to liaison reports. Liaison, Ms. Zarinski?
I attended the Farmland Preservation Board Meeting as a liaison, and I can tell you that there is 17,056.98 acres preserved on 208 farms. We're still moving through the list, and there's some exciting things coming out of farmland now. So Maria will be revealing them soon.
Thank you. Is that it, then? For you, Tara?
Yes, that is it for me. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Uh, Mr. McGee?
We had Lee Valley Planning Commission last Thursday. They brought up about, there's a new wave of 100-feet-tall warehouses might be coming into our area. They're, they're looking at, I guess they're in other areas, and they have robotics at the top part, and, you know, so they're robotic, you know, automated warehouses. So that was one of the big discussions at the Lee Valley Planning Board.
So in other words, they take up a lot of space but offer no jobs?
Well, yeah, that's, that's coming. That's coming. Apparently, it's gonna come, yeah.
I guess I'm summarizing to a degree there.
Yeah, well, we must, we must be a very attractive area here in the Lee Valley with New York City, Philadelphia, you know, New Jersey, and, you know, one of the, one of the comments I made that I hear from the administration a lot is they belong in the industrial parks and close to the highways. And, you know, they're trying to find other areas because they're cheaper, and townships are agreeing to, you know, whatever, so, but...
Well, you know, early on, townships, and I think some of them are having the issues now, as Ms. Ferraro mentioned, we didn't really have much say in it, but they welcomed huge housing developments, and I'm going back a bit now. And before, some of the bigger developments you see now were open fields or empty, or a few houses. And after the fact, the developers may not have put the roads in they promised, or the lights, or then we got into sewer issues, water runoff. So I mean, this is another phase of that evolution. I think with 33 and I-78, I mean, it was like, yeah, we're in a great spot, I mean, for these folks, so. I don't know. I wish, we all want to try and figure out the whole warehouse situation, and I don't know. I guess we're at loss. Ms. Vargo Hefner?
I have two. Tuesday, I attended the Mental Health Early Intervention Developmental Disabilities Meeting. Everybody is working, everybody is dealing, you know, still with the realities of COVID. They're still doing virtual with their clients, like they're all back to work, but they can't all see their clients. We, the stuff that we discussed about COVID at the mental health meeting was how they're planning to use their money to close service gaps from money that's not coming in from the state to make sure that their consumers are still being served. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Just talked a lot about, and then the funding. Tabitha talked a lot about the money and just, again, trying to capture every dollar. All the grants were out. She's working on new money, and so things are pretty good status quo. The thing that I was most interested in is the early intervention program. Does a lot of early interventional childcare, and those are all up and running for the fall, so, so there's no service gaps there. That's important. Also, bright and early on a Tuesday morning in Northampton County, we held a GPA meeting. And what did we do? We actually did real GPA business. We gave Lafayette College a bond refinance, and that was nice. And Glendon Hotel, we're still waiting to hear back on the grant that was sent out to do that project. And the bridge report was positive. We have bridges functioning, and I believe there's only seven left in design. Is that correct? There's some punch items on some, but we are moving along. And the only thing I guess I want to say for the record, given that we keep getting presentations from these folks, is that my understanding is that these eight bridges have not been deleted from the contact, the contract. We get a report every time, and they are bridges that are pending to be deleted because we are still in mediation and litigation, and so they have not been taken out. They've been suggested to. There's no option to swap at this time, and if Mr. Dirtnshire wants to speak to that more, he can, but am I correct? There's no swapsies at this point in time.
There's never been a swap.
Right. So nothing's, you know, they were just picked, and it's status quo.
If an individual comes to council and asks us to please do our part, you can do this, you should, you, if you don't do anything, you're affirming what was done before. There's really nothing we can do on council.
At this point, no, because there's nothing that the GPA could do except hold people to the contract that they're having, which we've done. Pardon?
It's a GPA issue.
Yes.
All right.
In my understanding, yes. Yes.
Okay, no, I just...
No, I'm looking at here, because my understanding is that's theirs, this is ours, and we're not swapping between the county, or we're not going back and forth, and even what was suggested to be done is still on hold and on pause. So really, the good news is that the work that needs to be done is getting done.
Good. I mean, I think it's the clarification for people, and maybe we'll have to repeat it again, that come in and say to council, "You should do A, B, C, D, or E," and we've, they've been here a few times, is that we really can't do A, B, C, D, and E on county council.
I don't know what else to say about it, and I mean, I hear them and I understand, but I mean, I think the people they want to yell at are not sitting here, and so, like, to keep asking, "Why did you pick that bridge?" I didn't. We didn't, and so those folks are not here. I mean...
All right. Any other liaison, Mr. Lot?
No, I just want to, and we're legally bound by that contract.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's the bottom line here.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Not a report, just a question. Linda, can I get West Ward's meeting, what date they're meeting? West Ward Association, because I guess I'm supposed to be there?
I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
All right, any other liaison reports? Seeing none. Counsel clerk's report?
Nothing.
Mr. Solicitor? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Giovanni, second. Ms. Vargo Hefner, all in favor? Aye. All right, we're adjourned.
I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah, correct.